Good evening. Today is Monday, December the 12th, and it's the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. First thing, we will have the presentation of colors by the Air Force JROTC cadets from JM Robinson High. And singing our national anthem will be the JM Robinson High School Choral Ensemble, conducted by Vivian Howard. If you all will please stand. The AR- the Air Force JROTC unit from JM Robinson consisted of a US flag was carried by Cadet Lieutenant Second- Cadet Lieutenant Second Lieutenant Zachary Corf. Carrying the North Carolina flag is Cadet Senior Airmen Gordon Donovan. Guarding the colors were Cadet Airmen First Class Ethan Bailey and Cadet Staff Sergeant Paris Carter. The cadets were instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose, US Air Force retired, and Master Sergeant Wayne Altrum, US Air Force retired. And as I noted earlier, the ensemble from JM Robinson presented the national anthem, and we thank them for their presentation. Tonight, our deputy will be Deputy Daniel Lambert, and he'll be out here supporting us. He's the SRO at Cox Mill Elementary. Deputy Daniel Lambert, thank you for your participation in what you do with our students out in Cox Mill, and I know that you're really happy that you got a dare classroom all of your own. Thank you. As you notice, our chair is empty here. Carolyn Carpenter is under the weather and unable to participate with us, but she'll be here in spirit. And as we go forward, board members, there is a mo- is there a motion to set the agenda? David Harrison makes the motion. Ms. Fartenbaugh seconds that. All right. All in favor of setting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, so the agenda is set, and that's six zero, and that brings us to our recognitions. Tonight, we have our Teacher Assistant of the Year and District Teacher of the Year, and Ms. Glenda Jones is coming to the podium to introduce them to us.
All right, good evening. The Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year program honors the contributions of pre-kindergarten through 12th grade teacher assistants to their schools, communities, and profession. The Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year will be submitted as a finalist in the North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistants of the Year program. The Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year must meet the following eligibility requirements in order for Cabarrus County Schools to submit to the NCATA Teacher Assistant Program. The Teacher Assistant of the Year must be a member of the North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistants for the two consecutive years prior to the nomination. The Teacher Assistant of the Year must be employed as a teacher assistant for a minimum of two years prior to the nomination. And the District Winner Teacher Assistant of the Year must submit a portfolio. We are here this evening to celebrate and recognize our Teacher Assistants of the Year and our District Teacher Assistant of the Year. At this time, I'm going to call each one of them in to come in and line up across the front of the room, and then they will shake hands with board members when we finalize the recognition. Our first Teacher Assistant of the Year is from AT Allen Elementary School, Ms. Tessa Our second one is Carl A. Fur Elementary School, Mary Ann Schuler, and she is not present tonight, but we do want to recognize her. Kathleen Dow from Charles E. Boger Elementary School. Nalinda Noons from Colton Webb STEM Elementary School. Patsy Sutphen, Concord High School. Kelly Templeton, Concord Middle School. Erin Laptos, Cox Mill Elementary School. Moses Smith, Cox Mill High School. Marjorie Harrington, Harold E. Winkler Middle School. Danny Avellanet, Harris Road Middle School, otherwise known as Mr. A. Susan Mattis, Harrisburg Elementary School. Not present is Elizabeth Canot from Mount Pleasant Middle School. Dawn Smith is present from Pitt School Road Elementary School. Not present Kathy Austin from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. Teresa Brines from Rocky River Elementary School. Elizabeth Vance from Royal Oaks Elementary School. Christine Roseman, WM Urban Elementary School. Not present is Deborah Bridgeman from Weddington Hills Elementary School. Not present is Renee Cobb from Wyancoff Elementary School. Present Candy Lewis from Wolf Meadow Elementary School. Teresa Ginn from WR Odell Primary School. And our district winner from Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Crystal Hall. All right.
Okay, so I'm gonna take two different pictures. One's gonna be like this. And then if you'll come down to the end of the line. It's a little weird, it's gonna get close, but half a cent. Okay, if you just turn around and shake hands, we'll go over there.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks for all the support. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Good work. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. I am right. I can see you. I can see you. Thank you. Thank you. Next up is our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. Dr. Louder and Ms. Glenda Jones will be presenting the awards. Award, excuse me.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Mr. Vaughn could not be with us this evening. Nevertheless, we want to thank him and Hillbush Ford for their continued support and for giving us the opportunity to recognize an outstanding teacher each month. The Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for December is Ms. Stephanie Bay. Ms. Bay, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here with you tonight, please come forward. Stephanie Bay teaches digital media classes at Mount Pleasant High School. She was nominated by a student who wrote. Ms. Bay does so much for each student she comes into contact with. Without a doubt, she has impacted my life in a positive way. I can always count on her to brighten my day. She treats her students like equals and with respect. She will sit down with you at any time if you need help with other classes or in need of advice. The student continued by saying, "I can honestly say that without having Ms. Bay multiple times throughout high school, I wouldn't have enjoyed school like I do. Ms. Bay is by far my favorite teacher and will be a lifelong influence on me. I am blessed to say that I know Ms. Bay." Ms. Bay, we thank you for having such a positive impact on your students over the years. Please allow Dr. Louder to present you with your award, and then allow our board members to the opportunity to congratulate you.
Ms. Ronnie Boone is making her way to the podium, and she is going to be giving us a review of all the Impact Through Education Awards for R. Brown McAllister and for Concord Middle School.
Good evening. As you said, Chairman Shoemaker, we are recognizing students and staff members this evening from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School and Concord Middle School for our Impact Through Education Awards this month. We're grateful to our community partners, the Cabarrus Regional Chamber, and BB&amp;T, who is our presenting sponsor, for making these awards possible each month during the school year. So first up, we will start with R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School, and I'd like to invite any members of the school's leadership team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from R. Brown McAllister is Hannah Meeks. Would Hannah and her family please come forward? If I can get y'all to shift down on that line right there where the green, right there. There you go. Hannah Meeks is a fifth grade student who always sets a positive example with other students in the R. Brown McAllister Bobcat family. She's kind, accepting, and a true problem solver. She is a student who is well-liked by her peers and is always willing to lend a hand when needed. She volunteers in class and is a genuine joy to be around. One of Hannah's teachers had this to say about her. "She's an outstanding student and always goes above and beyond to participate in class. She really shows our community what being an R. Brown McAllister student is all about, and for that, we are grateful." Congratulations, Hannah. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. (applause) Our next R. Brown honoree is London Roseman. Would London and his family please come forward? London is a fifth grade student at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School, and he is a positive role model at the school. London is a true leader. He perseveres through problems and thinks outside the box to be a problem solver. He is also a helper to his peers and his teachers. He understands what acceptance means and makes sure that his classmates feel included in every activity. One of London's teachers had this to say about him. "London always has a smile on his face and is so compassionate toward others. We are so thankful that London came to R. Brown this year. He is the true definition of what being a Bobcat is all about." Congratulations, London. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for R. Brown McAllister.[1177.11][1177.11](applause) Would Ms. Money and her family please come forward? Carmen Money is the Instructional Technology Facilitator and STEM Coach at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. Prior to accepting this position this year, Carmen was a second-grade teacher at R. Brown. Before coming to Cabarrus County Schools in 2015, Mrs. Money taught in the Rowan Salisbury School District, and she also has taught in Cumberland County Schools and Ori County Schools. In her new role, Carmen's energy and creativity are contagious as she helps to lead PLC meetings, supports teachers and small groups, and works within the community to create the STEM initiative at R. Brown. She is dedicated and a details kind of person who truly goes the extra mile to make the school shine. There's no limit to her giving as her love for the school is shown in everything that she does. That same love is felt from the staff about her. One of her colleagues had this to say. "Carmen is always willing to help with ideas, model lessons, and help get supplies. She's worked very hard to organize our STEM lab, and with her direction and aspirations, R. Brown will become a stellar STEM school." Another said, "Carmen has worked tirelessly to implement the STEM program at R. Brown while juggling the many and varied technology needs." Congratulations, Mrs. Money. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for R. Brown McAllister.[1317.52][1317.52](applause) And our final honoree this evening from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary is Ms. Eva Munoz. Would Ms. Munoz please come forward with her family?
Kids, I'm gonna need y'all to scoot up on the line so we can get you in the picture. Thank you.
Eva Munoz is in her second year working as a teacher assistant at R. Brown McAllister. She goes above and beyond every day to support the teachers and students that she works with. Whether she is working with a small math group, conducting a lesson, or providing additional planning time for a teacher, she gives 110%. She's always smiling and is always asking what she can do to help. One of her students said, "I love Mrs. Munoz. She thinks reading is important and helps me to understand it even if she has to speak it in Spanish for me." One of the teachers that she works with had this to say about her. "Eva is a tremendous asset to our school and can wear so many hats all in one day. She's always willing to work with students in any subject area, and she is just a joy to have in our classrooms. Ms. Munoz is invested in the school, and it's people like her that help to ensure that we are doing the right thing for kids. We are thankful that Mrs. Munoz is a part of R. Brown McAllister." Congratulations, Ms. Munoz, and thank you for making an impact at R. Brown McAllister.[1450.00][1450.00](applause) Now we'll move on to our Impact Through Education Award winners for Concord Middle School, and I'd like to invite any members of the school's leadership team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Concord Middle School is Mackenzie Fane. Would Mackenzie and her family please come forward?
Step forward on that line right there. Thank you. Mackenzie's impact on education has been through her work ethic and compassion. She's eager to learn and never gives less than 110% in anything that she does. She never seems to have a bad day and does all things with a happy heart. She appreciates life, people, and learning. She absorbs the knowledge like a sponge and applies that newly learned technique while trying with her very best effort. She's willing to help others and is so kind, gentle, patient, and understanding. Because of her determination to succeed, she shows others it's okay to ask questions and to ask for help. She is a problem solver and never gives up. Her learning definitely impacts all of those around her on a daily basis. She's a cheerleader at Concord Middle School and is an enterprising self-starter. She is a natural leader and makes it easy for others to follow her example. She's also the president of the Future Teachers Club at Concord Middle. She takes constructive criticism, absorbs it, and utilizes it to make herself stronger both academically and in all of her extracurricular activities. Mackenzie is well-rounded, respectful, ideal, and is an ideal student and person. She achieves her goals because of her dedication and determination to succeed. She is the epitome of this award and is an inspiration to all who meet her. Congratulations, Mackenzie. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Concord Middle.[1622.24][1622.24](applause)
Our next honoree from Concord Middle School is Quatray Mathis. Would Quatray and his family please come forward?
Did I pronounce your name right, Quatray? Okay, thank you. This student exemplifies initiative, hard work, and respect throughout everyday works and activities. He tries hard every day in class, volunteering to teach others, and always participates. More importantly, he is a role model for his peers. He also participates on the school's football and wrestling teams. He's always willing to help others and sets a good example for his peers. He has a great sense of humor and is very intelligent. Quatray does a fantastic job of being a loyal and true friend as well as a leader in the building. His teachers believe he will be a role model for the entire community one day. They also believe he will be a mentor for other kids because he has such a knack for coaching others. The Concord Middle School staff looks forward to see what he becomes and feels honored to have him as a student. Congratulations, Quatray. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Concord Middle School.[1746.24][1746.24](applause)
Our next Concord Middle honoree is Ms. Angela Childress. Would Ms. Childress and her family please come forward?
Ms. Childress joined the Concord Middle School family last year as the school's Spanish teacher. She immediately jumped in to help students. Since her arrival at the school, she has given 110% to students. She's truly the role model that all teachers should aspire to be. She has restructured the school's Spanish program so that the school is able to help English-speaking and Spanish-speaking students learn more about the Spanish language and culture. Senora Childress helps every single student to be the best possible person they can be, and she sets high expectations and rigor. She has high expectations for her students, and she is passionate about her students' learning. She celebrates cultural diversity by immersing students and staff with culturally enriched activities and lessons reaching beyond the traditional methods. She also helps her colleagues by being positive and encouraging every day. She works so hard for her students to ensure that they receive the very best possible education. She also serves on the school's IB Transition Team, and she has been instrumental as the staff has been learning about becoming an IB school. Ms. Childress has even led some professional development sessions for teachers on the basics in conversational Spanish so that they can better communicate with the Spanish-speaking families at the school. She's kind, approachable, compassionate, and wise. Ms. Childress and her passion are what truly makes an impact on education at Concord Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Childress, and thank you for all that you do at the school.
And our final honoree this evening at Concord Middle School is Ms. Iquanda Moore. Would Ms. Moore and her family please come forward?
Ms. Moore has worked at Concord Middle School in a supporting role and in various positions during her 14 years at the school. Her most significant impact on education is her love for students. She sets high expectations for them in all ways, and she will quickly call students out if they are not meeting those expectations. She cheers students on in a genuine way, and she's often able to connect with the ones that need help the most. She also leads by example with staff members and coaches others on how to work with students. Currently, she serves a dual role as blended learning facilitator for eighth-grade social studies as well as the ISS teacher. In her role with blended learning, she works closely with two eighth-grade teachers in helping students to learn the eighth-grade curriculum. Ms. Moore interacts with every eighth grader at Concord Middle School. As an ISS teacher, while working with Canvas and the blended learning model, she houses students that simply need time to refocus their priorities. She monitors them closely and helps them organize their academics. She does all of this while laughing with her colleagues. Ms. Moore embraces students' learning needs and builds positive and healthy relationships with them. She is truly a role model at Concord Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Moore. Congratulations.
Mr. Brian Tyson is coming up to the podium, and he's going to introduce our state athletic champions, some of them. I would like to call forward all the state champions to come up front.
We've had an outstanding fall season in Cabarrus County Schools Athletics. We've had an individual state champion. We've had a team state championship. We've had many others that's come really close. Hickory Ridge High School's football team this past Friday night was in the state semifinal, so we've just had a banner fall so far, and looking forward to have a great winter and spring coming up. First of all, I would like to introduce to you Katie, or Kate Earnhardt. Okay, step forward, Kate. Kate is the 3A state champion in singles and tennis this fall, and had an outstanding year. She is just a junior, so we look forward to having her back up here next year. She was also the South PMO Conference Player of the Year, All-Conference, and the Regional Champion. Just had an outstanding year, undefeated in her season. So we'll probably see her at Wimbledon one day also, right? So congratulations, Kate. Secondly, this fall, we had the Cox Mill volleyball team. It was an outstanding game. I don't think they broke much of a sweat up there when they beat Chapel Hill. It took Dr. Lauder and I longer to get up there than it did for them to dismantle Chapel Hill and then turn back around. We had a great time. That was exciting, just a great match. A few things about these girls is they were 35-0 this year, did not lose a single match. An impressive thing to me was that out of 102 sets, they won 97 of those this year. So they only lost five sets the whole season. They only have five seniors. It's scary. They may be just as good or better next year as well. So congratulations to you girls. They finished with a number seven ranking nationally by MaxPreps. And I'd like to introduce each one of these girls for tonight. I have Peyton. I hope I don't butcher anybody's names, so I practiced a little bit with your A.D., Brad Henson, so hopefully I have most of them right. Paige Baldelli. Okay, step forward. Step forward, okay. Emma Eford. Grace Corino. She's not here, okay. Peyton Taylor. Nia Bridges. Allison Sersma. Avery Wilson. Lauren Phillips. Tyler Fitzpatrick. Melanie Jones. Courtney Weber. Taylor Rowland. Kristen Leday. Corinne Bridges. Lindsay Koenig. And Elena Zakina? Close enough? Okay, a couple little tidbits on this also. Taylor Rowland, step forward, Taylor. Taylor was the MVP of the state championship game. It was just unreal to see how hard she hit the ball. I've had to get in front of many ground balls before and many fullbacks and gotten run over before, but I'm pretty sure I wouldn't get in front of one of her spikes without some catching equipment, anyway. So congratulations, Taylor, on that. Lauren Phillips was also recognized at the High School Athletic Association for the Sportsmanship Award. That's big time also. We're proud of you for that. Courtney Weber was also the South PMO Conference Player of the Year. She serves on the Student-Athlete Advisory Council also, which is a huge honor. And just recently, she was a winner of the Carolina Panthers Community Captain Award winner. So congratulations. All conference members were Lauren Phillips, Courtney Weber, Taylor Rowland, and Allison Sersma. Sersma. Sersma, right. And we appreciate that, all your efforts and your hard work, and it was just an honor to be able to watch you play on a special season. So congratulations. And let me say this, though. I did forget, two of the most important people were their coaches, and that was Michelle Phillips and Rebecca Dallinger. Sorry, ladies.
Well, that moves us to our approval of minutes, 5.1. We're going to approve the minutes for November the 7th, our work session, and November the 14th, our business meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to abstain from voting because I wasn't present.
Board members, are you happy? Are you okay with that? Okay. So Tim Fur makes the motion. Mr. Harrison seconds the motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes from November the 7th and November the 14th, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, that motion carries 5-0. Oh, do what? Okay. All right. All right, so I had it 5-0. And Mr. Powell was not here as well, so we've got that corrected. All right, we have our reports, and I'll move over to Dr. Lauder and let him move this along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to begin tonight with a reminder that the deadline to apply for any of our school choice programs is next Wednesday, December 21st at noon. Applications must be submitted electronically. You can access the application from our district website. If you don't have internet access at home, you can complete an application using a computer at your school. Our school choice programs include STEM, IB, and language immersion, as well as our year-round school, early colleges, and academies. So make sure you get your applications submitted by the December 21st deadline. Congratulations to the winners of our annual holiday E-Card contest. Thank you to all the students who entered this year. We received 123 submissions. Selecting winners wasn't easy, but I did make final selections. And these are all on our website that you can view, and we will recognize them at next month's board meeting. And the traditional category from elementary school was Mariah Richardson. She was from Long Preschool. At middle school, it was Brianna Gallagher, 7th grade, from Winkler Middle School. And at high school, Abby Moose, 12th grade, Northwest Cabarrus High School. And this year, we added a digital category for the first time. At middle school, the winner was Celine Terones, who's a 7th grade Winkler Middle School student. And at high school, it was Latavia Chanel Conway, who's in the 11th grade at Concord High School. So again, congratulations to all these winners, and you can see the cards on our website, and we'll recognize them at next month's meeting. Since our last business meeting, we learned that we won our second I-III grant from the U.S. Department of Education. The Investing in Innovation, which is what I-III stands for, competition awards more than $103 million to launch and expand evidence-based practices that support educators and transform students' academic experiences. Fifteen applications were selected from 385. Each of the 15 will have to secure matching private sector funds by December in order to receive the federal funding. I'm happy to report that Cabarrus County Schools has secured all of the private funding, and therefore we can move forward with receiving the grant. We will develop, we're using the acronym EMPOWER, which stands for Expanding Magnet Program Options and Widening Educational Reach. It addresses and promotes diversity and will serve approximately 10,008 students, a little more than one-third of our district's students. EMPOWER will establish a continuum of high-quality K-12 magnet programs, combined with the layering of innovative, noncognitive, social, emotional, and academic supports and services, which will increase academic achievement and educational attainment outcomes while decreasing racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic isolation of students attending our schools. Later this week, our STEM students will compete in the annual paper airplane contest at the Embassy Suites in Concord. This event is always a fun time and a great opportunity for our students to showcase their skills in building aerodynamic paper airplanes. We have posted and shared our inclement weather procedures and information. Be sure to review the information before any inclement weather comes our way. You can find the information on our district website as well as on our social media sites. And finally, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season. The winter break begins on December 22nd for students. We hope you enjoy the time off from school and work. Be safe. We will look forward to welcoming everyone back on January 3rd to finish up our first semester. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Lauder. At this point, we're at Section 7.1, which is our guest speakers. I have no guest speaker's cards to announce, so there will be no one speaking tonight. However, in accordance with Board Policy 2310, as revised by the Board on May 11th in 2015, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the Board. Sign-up cards will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the Board. Speakers must hand in a completed card to the Board clerk no later than 6:00 p.m., the normal start time of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. The Board Chair will decide the time devoted to public comments. Speakers must complete a contact information card, including their name, the group name if applicable, address, and phone number, and list the general education-related topic of their presentation for the Board minutes. Seeing none available to speak tonight, we'll move on to our approval of the consent agenda. In 8.1, we have the approval of the December 12th consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written? Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Ms. Furtinbaugh seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, that motion carries 6-0. And that carries us to the action agenda, and our first one is 9.1, approval of the policy revisions and PLS updates for approval on the first reading. We have two policies, 4040 and 4700. And Ms. Reimer and Ms. Burns are at the podium for any additional questions that you may have.
So in 4040, we did make the suggested changes. We added the title for the Title IX coordinator, as well as a link to the webpage where all this information is found, as the Board requested. And then Policy 4700, there were no requests for that change, just asked to be on action.
That's quick. I appreciate that. I think it makes it more readable for folks to review. And the only other question I had, and that came to mind, is how do we keep this policy top of mind? Should there be a training requirement or something to that effect, being that, you know, how common, unfortunately, how common stuff like this occurs?
I can let Ms. Jones speak to that, but we do training yearly with our staff, principals, teachers, everybody, but I can let Ms. Jones speak to that a little bit more. She wants to... Okay.
So at new teacher orientation, our attorneys, either one of them, will present, and one of the topics they talk about is staff-student relations. And then what we've started doing after each board meeting is sending the board policies out. I'm not sure who's, Ms. Boone through Communications Department, she's sending an email out to all staff to let them know which board policies have been covered or updated as a refresher to staff members.
Okay, so we're comfortable that's enough to keep it top of mind?
All right, is there a motion to approve these two policies on the first of reading?
Seven.
All right, Ms. Furtinbaugh makes the motion. Mr. Fur, second. Mr. Fur seconds it. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving these two policies, 4040 and 4700 on the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that motion carries 6-0. And that moves us on to 9.2, which is the approval of the Wolf Meadow 2017-2018 calendar. And Ms. Reimer is here to, again, answer any questions that you may have on this calendar. Mr. Harrison?
Dr. Reimer, will the calendar, after we take a vote on it, assuming it is approved, how will it be communicated to the current families as well as prospective families in the immediate future so they can make plans for the next calendar year? How will it be communicated?
So typically, our schools, Ms. Brunson, the principal there, is anxious to get her hands on this so that she can get it to all the parents. We'll post it on our website as well with all the calendars, which is typically where everyone goes, so.
Mr. Walter?
Move approval?
And Mr. Powell? All right, Mr. Powell?
Well, when we went and approved this, I guess, last year, Ms. Carpenter in particular, and it's unfortunate she's not here, mentioned wanting to see data, et cetera, about, you know, the students that were there versus their performance as we moved through this new calendar. And unfortunately, we were not able to see any of that comparison data from students that were there last year versus their attendance now this year, which is what we asked for last week and then also when it was approved originally. So I'm making the assumption that maybe it's coming later before it maybe gets into a third year. But that's just my general concern.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. And we did get the gross results, but we didn't get the results of the specific students this week.
Correct. We got results from students that were seemingly included that were not at the school last year, that were transfer students, but...
Yeah. All right. So, Mr. Walter, are you still standing by your motion?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Walter makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Harrison seconds that motion. All in favor of approving the calendar for Wolf Meadow Schools, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that motion carries 5-1. And that moves us on to the approval of board attendance at the NC SBA Public Policy Conference in January. Mr. Harrison has suggested that he's interested in attending this public policy conference. Are there any other board members that would like to attend this? I believe it's over in Pinehurst. Yes?
I'll do my best to attend, sir.
All right.
Eagle Scout promise.
All right, so is there a motion to allow Mr. Harrison to participate in the Pinehurst Conference?
Seven.
All right, Ms. Furtinball makes the motion. Mr. Walter seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion to allow Mr. Harrison to attend the public policy conference in Pinehurst, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that move, that motion carries 6-0. Now, that moves us to convening in closed session. And I will need a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body. General Statute 143-318.11A5 to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning a position to be taken on by or on behalf of the public body. General Statute 143-318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer, et cetera. And General Statute 115C-319 through 321 to discuss Mullery versus Cabarrus County Board of Education. Is there a motion to go to closed session? Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Furtinball seconds the motion. Any discussion to go into closed session? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We're now in closed session. Thank you.